For Colin, since he has transportation.
Okay, we're recording you.
GPS in the car, just keep saying it. But for a long time, the city didn't have anyone with that kind of transportation background. And I think that's also pretty common on other bodies and other towns. And so some of the things I want to talk about really quickly are citywide issues, but we'll play into some more detail when you do look at form-based codes. So I'm going to just give you two examples and how to look for those problems in the future as you make changes. If you look on Market Street, you can see that the three-inch drop along the length of a building results in a split sidewalk. So you have some public sidewalk that's at a normal grade, and then the floors of the buildings are just a couple inches up. So they make these little sidewalks that match the building, and then they have to make either a ramp or a step to match the more public part of the sidewalk. These really constrict pedestrian and bike movement. And so if we have a situation where grading is going to occur like that, we need to actually denote, sorry, designate more space for pedestrian and bike flow, especially in street situations. I'm going to use street and road in a non-interchangeable way. A street is a public travel way that encompasses multiple modes of transportation and has destinations, stores, houses, places to go to and be in front of. Whereas a road is something that is just designed to move vehicles or maybe bikes longer distances. So Dorset Street is a road. Williston Road is a road or Strode. It's trying to do both functions and is doing them both very poorly. And so when we look at situations where we have buildings being built right up to the property line, it's really good at maximizing the value per acreage, like the taxable value per acreage that helps with maintaining municipal services and is really important. But if we don't make the spaces for the pedestrians and people who actually will frequent those shops, if we don't make that accordingly, they won't drive the same kind of business. There won't be the same agglomeration benefits. So in that example, example one, that's the thing to think about is dealing with those kinds of grades that make sidewalks get separated. The other place where you would see that is by Blissby, where there is a totally avoidable Blissby on Shelburne Road. Totally avoidable, there's three different sections of sidewalk. It's five feet next to the curb, eight-foot green strip, 10-foot sidewalk, stairs, and then sidewalk at level with the storefronts. There's 30 feet there to play with. If it had just been two different sidewalk levels, that would have been way more efficient. 10-foot buffer right next to the road, that's more space for the trees, more separation for pedestrians. You get to expand the amount that the public pedestrian and bikers can use because we really don't want bikers in Shelburne Road, right, in a place like that. The other thing to worry about with roads when you build up to the front line is that if there isn't a lot of right-of-way, it's better to put the bike and pedestrian access on the other side of the building. We, on Dorset Street, which is a road, most buildings are set back a little bit because there's a lot of traffic going at a fast speed. This is very uncomfortable for people who are not protected by a steel cage. So we have, next to my neighborhood, 325 Dorset Street, there's a dermatology building that's fairly new. It's built right up to the lot line on both Brookwood and Dorset Street. The problem is there's really no extra space to buffer pedestrians and cyclists. So whenever somebody wants to leave Brookwood, they stop across the crosswalk. No one stops before it. This is a common problem in South Burlington, but it's exacerbated when there is no sightline of oncoming traffic unless you block the crosswalk. So in situations like this, we have to be really mindful of daylighting the intersection. With a street with parking on it, you get so much more distance between the actual travel lane and the buildings, that's really beneficial. So drivers might cross the crosswalk before they stop, but they will see pedestrians or cyclists in their view a little bit longer before that happens. In situations like Brookwood, there's no time. So it creates a really dangerous situation. Granted, that little building, that commercial building, is assessed at a rate 10 times higher than the U-Mall, the rate per acre, right? So it's really good for the city revenue-wise, but it's really bad for helping connectivity and agglomeration happen in terms of people on foot or on bike or using, you know, non-motorized transportation. So I think you'll see some of these things pop up a little bit more as you dive into the form-based code, but they do still have broader application across the rest of the city. I don't think the presenter is going to get that deep on things tonight, but I know you're starting this process. I really want you to kind of work those gears and be aware of how the psychological comfort of people makes a really big difference on if they will use the infrastructure we build. Thanks.
Good, thanks, Brian. Anyone else with items not related to the agenda? Okay, then we can go into announcements. We did have a few things right in our packet to review with some links on the Green Mountain Transit changes as well as the City Green feasibility study, which had come up a little bit at our last meeting. There's an update in there. Anyone have any announcements? Michael?
Actually, I have a question about the, there's a disconnect between what was in the minutes of the council meeting and what we have in our packet. The council minutes say that Mr. Counselor Smith suggested asking the commission to present some alternative language for the council to consider. And we have, the staff was asked to develop options that use the concept of lands reserved for the future in a master plan, and that would apply to the balance of land at the time a property owner elects to take advantage of the one-time master plan carve-out of up to two acres. I went back to listen and looked at the minutes, and what I first read is what's there. What you have, what we have in our packet is not what the council said. It may not be relevant, but it's, but then again, it might.
Okay, that's pretty specific to item seven.
It is only specific to item seven.
Did you raise it again?
I could raise it again.
When we get to item seven, should he raise it again rather than try to?
Yeah, it seems like off his timing to talk about it now. I don't.
Okay, it's just that I had my note in front of me. Are we on item four?
Think about what they remember.
Are we on item four?
When we get to item seven.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
Can we?
Yes, we're on item number four.
Okay. Anybody, were any of us at the council meeting? Because I don't want to listen to it twice.
Which one?
The, where is it? Service reduction for?
You're still talking about the same thing, but?
Green Mountain Transit.
Oh, the Green Mountain Transit.
Was that the third, when you got the presentation?
This meeting is being recorded.
That's when you got the transit report, was September 3rd. Okay, so I listened in at home.
I was here, so. Anybody else here at?
I'm sorry, I'm missing what you're asking, Michael.
Well, we have a short evening, meeting this evening. I'm trying to avoid having to go through the whole presentation, if we can avoid it.
Of what?
Of the Green Mountain Transit draft service reductions.
I, we were not planning to talk about one. That's just a staff announcement for you about what exists. You can discuss if you'd like to have a discussion, but tonight, there was no scheduled discussion of that.
Well, I might add what they presented, what was, I think it was two or three scenarios. So it wasn't necessarily definitive, except their deficit is. That's pretty definitive. But how they were going to resolve that, I think, as I recall, they had a couple different choices.
Yep.
And they were kind of waiting for towns to pony up more or for other data to come along.
Yeah, I think one of them was to cancel Bus 11, which is quite an important one.
Okay, other announcements, Paul Ingles?
Not so much an announcement, an announcement, but a question. I've had several questions about the status of the property that is the Pizza Hut.
Can you speak into the mic there, Paul?
Pizza Hut and Shell Station on the corner of Swifton and Shelburne Road.
Would you like a quick update on that?
Please.
So a while ago, the applicant, I guess I want to say a year and a half ago, the property owner submitted an application to redevelop the Pizza Hut, the gas station, and the service station behind it. That application was denied by the DRB because they did not meet our, the board did not feel that it met our inclusionary zoning standards or our requirement around drive-throughs. The, that was appealed to the environmental court. In the meantime, the applicant submitted a new application to the DRB rectifying both of those. In May of this year, the DRB approved the revised plan. And then a couple weeks after that, the environmental court issued a decision. It was a de novo review, but they came to the same conclusion as the DRB did, that the application that the DRB had denied did not meet the city's regulations at that time. The applicant is considering whether they're going to appeal that to the Supreme Court. And additionally, they're reviewing our draft regulations that have gone to council to see if that modifies any of the way that they're looking at things because inclusionary zoning standards change and things like that. So we're in regular communication with them on that, but that's the current status. It balls in their court.
In the meantime, can anything be done to clean up those properties which are eyesores?
They, they applied for and received a permit to remove the buildings if they choose. So that has been issued by the city, but it's their action. And in the meantime, when we're, when we see of poor activity taking place on the property, us and the police department have let the property owner know in order for them to take steps.
Can, can I ask a follow-up? Because I, I don't think I understood you properly. So they submitted a second proposal to the DRB that rectified the two issues. Has that been?
That was approved by the DRB.
And that was approved?
Yeah, but there's.
They still want to take this higher?
They are considering, so they waited, after they got their DRB approval, they were still waiting on the E-Court to issue a decision on the first one. The E-Court, environmental court, excuse me, issued their decision, which basically mirrored the original DRB decision of denying the application. And it's now their choice as to whether they appeal to the Vermont Supreme Court. So that's, that's their, their decision, their court to what they want to do. So they have an approval, and they have the right to appeal the denial of the first application.
And they have a couple years to start, I mean, act on this approval of the plan? I can't remember. I mean, you don't, it isn't like forever.
Correct, it's, it's an unusual situation. We don't usually have two concurrent decisions from a DRB on the same property, but that's what they chose to do. So we have not reached the point of having to unwind that question. Because currently, one of them is under court appeal, and so that sort of pauses everything when it's under court.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
And what's the status of raising the buildings?
They, that is, they received a permit to do so. They have chosen to not do that yet. For, for whatever reason, that's, they don't tell us why they choose to or not to, but they do, they did get a permit to do it.
Hey, any other announcements?
Just briefly, that the city council last night, with several people who are in attendance here tonight, had a special meeting to discuss 1720 Spear Street, the, what was previously known as the Long, now called Longview Property. Back in February, the city council at the time had submitted a letter of support for the South Burlington Land Trust and NEET, which is the property owner, Northeast Agricultural Trust, to apply for funds from the Vermont Housing Conservation Board for conservation. The council last night considered a updated letter of support that would go to VHC-B for their meeting next month. The HCB is considering funding both conservation of a portion of the piece of land as well as supporting, supporting the funding of the construction of permanently affordable housing units in a agreement that NEET has with Habitat for Humanity. And so the council last night, after some discussion, ultimately submitted a letter of support, strongly supporting the project and indicating that if certain conditions are met in terms of an appraisal being completed and the property being surveyed and certain other requirements that the city council would be prepared to commit up to $461,000 towards that from the Open Space Fund. So more to come on that, but just heads up on a subject area that council spent a lot of time on recently.
Great, thank you.
Did I miss anything? Was I deeply inaccurate in any of my summary there? Okay.
Okay, so we can move on to five, the form-based code update.
I, or just, I guess, one, my question, I guess, are, this, this quickly circling back to the whole Green Mountain Transit thing. Are we considering doing more discussion with that as a board? I guess, I guess the reason I sort of come at that is, so I'm fairly familiar with transit. I've worked about transit age before, and the, the level of cuts are very concerning. And I am very worried about ripple effects it's going to have to like sort of public, like public transit, you know, usage in the city as a whole, and also how it's going. Can we talk a lot about, you know, transit-based zoning? And the service frequencies are absolutely crucial in having effective transit-based use and transit use. And also, you know, we've got pretty aggressive, you know, city goals. I've seen it like, you know, in our city plan of like increasing transit ridership. And it's currently, you know, with this funding thing going in other direction. So I guess it's more worth to say, I mean, I could go on for this for a while for the more kind of specific nitty-gritty why I'm concerned. But I guess I was wondering if there's any interest in discussing it further or because I do feel it is relevant to zoning and planning because, again, we're trying to encourage non-auto ride share as part of how we're building our cities. And if we're slashing transit service, that's kind of antithetical to that goal, even if there is some service. So I don't know, that's just, I'm just sort of curious what, if there's any interest in kind of discuss this further or perhaps something out of like having a joint statement or something like that? I don't know exactly. I'm pretty new here, so I don't really know exactly how we might handle stuff like this. Yeah.
Well, I guess, how do you think that there's like room in the process for us to like send a letter or like make a statement that would at least go to city council? Like stating how important, I mean, because we do have some of our zoning based on the transit routes, so.
So I guess I'll start from the broad, and then I'll go to the specific. At a broad level, it is the planning commission's authority under charter and under statute that if you, if something is planning-related and you want to discuss it and have feedback either to the council or to other bodies, that is your prerogative. And so that's your decision on what to, what to, what areas to focus on. So it is certainly within your authority to do that. Staff has not sort of contemplated a specific action, but that can be your discussion about how you would like to take that. So please feel free to do so. On the more specific end, you mentioned zoning. If there are service changes, Nick and I were discussing this last week. Some of your zoning is connected to where transit service is provided. And I think at a minimum, if, if there are decisions made by Green Mountain Transit to substantially alter service, then at a minimum, I think you'd want to revisit that piece of the puzzle. But I think Colin is talking both about the small picture of zoning, but also the big picture of the role of transit. So that's really up to you all. And, yeah.
Yeah, and I guess the follow-up to that is like, what, what do you think the timeline is for them making a decision about cuts?
So what they presented on August 27th is their draft decision in two phases of action. So phase one would be cuts taking place in February, and phase two would be cuts taking place in July of next year. In order to take, make those cuts, they need to basically, through their various contracts, have to bid out those services to the drivers some months in advance. So they're in the process over the next five or six weeks to hold public meetings around the region, get feedback, and then either finalize those decisions or if entities such as V-Trans or others have supplemental funds or there's feedback on having different routing cuts or other ideas, then this is the period during which that's happened. So it's, and then for the June ones, it's a little longer, sorry, July ones, they've got till about February to make those final decisions. So they were trying to intentionally put it in two realms so that there's more opportunity for parties to both provide feedback and hopefully from their perspective and many limit the amount of cuts. So that's what I know.
So it sounds quite timely and like it's going to have a big impact on our community. We, so, so Colin, we're not in a position tonight because of how it's on the agenda to like have any kind of specific action, but what we can do is see if the group is generally interested in pursuing it as an agenda item on one of our upcoming meetings. Maybe to look a little closer at it, how it relates to our zoning, and look at the roadmap maybe and potentially issue a letter or statement.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like, it sounds like we were to do it in a deal we'd have to have the next week meeting, it sounds like if that's a timeframe. I think it's part of the reason I brought it up as well is because I know they are as well, specifically requesting funding from the city of South Burlington. And I remember hearing, among other sources too. So it is something that's like, you know, in our sphere of influence, whether or not, whether anyone's too stacked on that or not. But of course, you know, you know, I'm only one person, so I'd have to, you know, get, understand what other people on the board also feel on this matter as well, absolutely. Do I appeal of interest in perhaps discussing this the next meeting? Or is that just, or we feel like it's not in our wheelhouse?
I, I would say that it's, it's a service that doesn't get used much. It's subsidized heavily, and I think that if, if we're going to look at it, we should look at it through the lens of how could ridership be increased? Because that's what it comes down to, I think, is it's a subsidized service. It just doesn't get used that much.
I, I guess, yes.
That's why they're cutting routes is they're not, you know.
No, I, I would push back on this a little bit. I mean, I know we don't have a full temper discussion. It's not really that the ridership isn't actually that bad. The main reason around these cuts is because their budget has gone up massively due to increased labor costs and healthcare costs. So we've sort of seen, and essentially, yeah, there's a lot COVID funding that kind of hid that. But I mean, an interesting fact I found was that nationally, transit ridership around the country has only recovered to about 75% pre-COVID levels. Green Mountain percentage is at 87%, so it's actually well above average at recovery from COVID. And it's yet subsidized, but like, you know, so are all of our roads. Like, it's sort of, it's, I think, I mean, this is again, me even kind of profiting from persons kind of from a transit background is it's easy to think of it as a business because it's something that's moving people around, but it really is kind of better thought of as a physical infrastructure. And yeah, I definitely agree, there's definitely discussion to be had about what is the right amount of subsidy. But like, its subsidy amounts are actually pretty in line and actually pretty, like, the cost per rider on the 11 is barely higher than the cost per rider on the New York City bus network, interestingly. It's surprisingly close. Like, I'm just, I guess I'll push back. I think there's a perception that it gets poor ridership, but I, I'm not sure I'd agree with that. But again, as you said, this is, it's, I, it's definitely a larger discussion, absolutely. But it's, it's, the problem isn't ridership. The problem is their costs have risen, all the COVID funding has dried up. They kind of hid those rising costs because their, their, most of their costs are labor, and labor rates are massively up. Like, their operators are starting to pay 30 an hour now because people don't want to drive buses because it's a very difficult job. So like, you know, that's sort of the main reason, as far as I could tell, that they're having this budget crisis is their costs have gone up and their funding hasn't matched that. I mean, it's the same crisis we had with the schools where, you know, all their healthcare costs are running up, so needed massive budget spikes. And, you know, it's, the same problem is affecting the bus network. It's not like they're, it's not, it's not, it's not, it doesn't seem like a ridership problem. It's more a problem of their operating costs have gone up faster than their funding has. But at least that's, yeah, that's my take.
I mean, there's clearly discussion happening, so.
Yeah, yeah, I can shut up.
So, because this is an announcement, but if folks are interested in adding this to a future agenda to give some kind of statement or at least just talk about it more, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I would be. I would like to understand how it might impact some of our zoning and some of the density goals that we have. Because those depend on a certain amount of services, I think. And it would just be important to know if we need to make changes there.
Okay, so Donna?
Yeah, just, I think we should have this at a future agenda because they're also having difficulty finding drivers for school buses. And possibly there could be some consolidation of that that helps. But I don't, I don't, I think it's worth continuing to talk about it.
Okay, and those are subject areas we can update you on. Staff has been working closely with the school district and Green Mountain Transit on analyzing some future opportunities too. So we'd be happy to talk with you all about that if you're interested.
Okay, yeah, that sounds like a good option. So we will do that. So we'll move on to number five, the form-based code update or project update. Update, project update.
Update, project update, yes.
Just going to say it goes both, double update.
So, let's see, yeah, great, thanks.
I think we're going to hear from Nick.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I will be taking this one on. So just getting the PowerPoint going. Okay. So. There should be screen sharing.
Fun continues. Why is it not?
Interesting shot, I had a hard time kind of figuring out that.
I'm looking at it because that's my vehicle parked right there.
Was that right?
Yes, I was like, that's my car.
Okay.
Yeah, my store is right here.
Still not working. Yeah.
You can, yeah, you can drive right, no, you drive around behind the mall.
It's in the form-based code.
If you drop off clothes at the.
I come from the other side.
Oh, yeah, that replace.
Yeah, then you go, you can go all the way around, right to here. Yeah.
So I guess this is, this is a little bit of an announcement. At the, after the last meeting, I went home so, so happy. At the, after the last meeting, I went home so, so happy after the students came in and helped us name the street. I just, it was just so great. And I know I didn't mention it during announcements, but like it was just a great, great meeting and um I don't know, it made me really proud to be on the planning commission. I mean, sometimes I go home and it's like, whoo, we made it through that, I guess.
No, it was, it was really neat to see the kids.
It was.
Go through that process, that was really.
They were darling.
Yeah.
And very engaged, that was sort of the best part.
Yeah, like engaged citizens.
Yeah, and their little personalities came through, they had a fair amount of poise, I thought.
They did, yeah, some of them were a little microphone hungry. Really neat to see.
Yeah, and just see what they're like.
It was really just a heartwarming story too, like the name they chose, you know, so.
It is.
Very neat.
So I haven't noticed, has the sign gone up?
Um, I think there was gonna be, I don't think it happened yet. There's a ceremony of some kind.
Oh, that's right, we're gonna have a ceremony.
But I don't think it happened. This, I know.
Yeah.
We already held it from last year. This item's just not meant to be. Well, we're gonna have to do it eventually, Paul. Okay, let's see what else is on the agenda. Can we um, can we approve the minutes? August twenty seven?
I'll, I'll move approval of the minutes of August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four as presented.
I will second.
Okay, any discussion about the minutes? Okay, all in favor of approving?
Aye.
Okay, we did that, that was exciting. Um, let's see, I guess the other thing that I have, and I was gonna say it when we got to the LDR amendments, but um next Monday, um I am gonna be doing like a big presentation to the city council.
Uh, we can't hear you anymore, I don't know if you're aware of that.
I, I, no, I'm not being helpful, they're being helpful is what I'm trying to say, um. But that is gonna be happening and it made me realize what a large body of work um this group has done. Once it was kind of all laid out in outline form, all in one spot and still, you know, we had in so many, we had accomplished it in many, many chunks, like even when we sent it forward, you know, didn't seem quite as daunting, but um, thinking about the presentation, it's uh kind of a lot to talk through, so it's gonna be an interesting.
Uh, City Hall, you appear to have cut out audio again, like we can't hear you in the uh, on Zoom.
More refers to older housing that is um, that becomes naturally affordable because it is no longer commanding a market premium.
Oh.
So, an example, yeah, an example would be, I lived in an apartment in Burlington until recently and that apartment was, you know, several hundred dollars below the, what would, might be considered market rate or something that you would move into having been made new. It was new in nineteen forty-six and it would probably commanded the market rate in nineteen forty-six when it was built. But it doesn't anymore, um, and uh, that's, you know, due to a bunch of reasons, um, but the age of the building is one of them.
So we actually do have some naturally affordable housing, it seems like. Uh, our housing stock in South Burlington seems to be um younger than Burlington for one, but also going up, I mean, small homes that you would think might be more affordable are commanding pretty enormous prices. So it's almost as if, you know, if you're a young professional, don't bother looking in South Burlington unless you want to be in a one-bedroom apartment. It seems, I mean, maybe that's an over.
No, you, I mean, like a neighborhood like the Orchards.
Exactly.
Perfect example of small houses that were probably more affordable ten years ago, not now.
I mean, maybe, I mean, are you, Nick, are you kind of saying like, um, like a new house of the same size would be more expensive than the existing house of the same size? That's kind of what you're saying, you're not saying like.
Yeah, more, more, it's more of a term of, of art than a term of science. Um, because it kind of ignores other things that, that might lead to a, any given property's value like size or location or amenities and stuff like that. But I think it's, it's kind of referencing the general principle that, yeah, something of roughly, you know, all things, other other things being equal, the age and general condition of housing might negatively affect its, its, its price, given a certain amount of, of both accumulating.
Okay.
Uh, that.
Yeah.
That clarifies it for me, thank you.
Which is not a situation that's happening right now.
It doesn't appear that way.
Okay, um, so we had a little bit of an interlude there where we tried to cover a few things. Um, we are uh moving back to form-based code update, project update.
Yeah, so to talk about the exact opposite of um naturally occurring affordable housing, we're going to talk about newly uh built uh much, much designated um affordable and inclusionary zoning housing. Much of which has, which has been built uh in the form-based code district. And now we're going to talk about um some of the work that we've been doing studying this and um take a moment to sort of see where we're at and where we're gonna be going. And all this is happening in the context of an ongoing effort that staff have been engaged on with a consulting architect, Greg Rabidou, to, to make a formal study of the form-based code um and uh look at recommendations potentially for how to tweak it going forward. Got it, okay, slide please, thanks, Paul. Um, so just a quick refresher, um, we'll start with the geographic side of that. This is our form-based code area, um, covers all of city center, um, but just to remind folks, we've also got um areas north of Williston Road, the Staples Plaza and Doubletree Hotel area, as well as the U Mall and San Remo Drive areas um included in the form-based code and even some parts of um will, of Heinsberg Road and what will soon be the, the Midas Drive alignment um up in that area. And we'll talk about those more in a little bit, so next slide, please. Um, so just a quick reminder also, as especially as we talk about this general area and the building that we're in, um, there's like a number of different layers to uh, to how we got here and why this exists here and why it exists now, um, not some other time. So um, all of this has been affirmed by City Plan twenty twenty-four, we're building this denser, walkable um thriving city center in downtown, um anchored here in Market and Garden Streets near, near uh this complex. All of this exists within the tax increment financing area, that's a, you know, tool that has been around for about fourteen years now and allows us to borrow against future tax revenues that are brought in, uh brought up by um, by this uh development. That's funding a lot of the capital improvement that's happening, such as the um Bike Ped Bridge and some of the streetscape improvements on North Williston Road that have been planned and are gonna be starting pretty soon. We're also um subject to the um, we're not really subject, I think it's maybe the, the wrong description, we're um within the uh and enabled by the Newtown Center and Neighborhood um Development Area State Designations, which confer tax benefits and other grant eligibility on certain properties uh within these areas. And um then of course, we've got the form-based code itself and the city map, both of which are zoning documents, official city documents that regulate land use and built, uh in the built environments designed within these areas. Next slide, please. So just a quick um, borrow this slide from a uh, a previous discussion of the um NDA, the Neighborhood Development Area, roughly the same parcels as the um form-based code area, form-based code goes a little farther across, uh, uh, Williston Road to the north and also across the highway, but um they're roughly can, uh, can take you or um, they roughly overlay, so um we've seen a lot of development, obviously, a lot of this development is happening within um the T-five zoning, uh transected zone of the uh, the form-based code especially. So we can all look around and appreciate um what that looks like and um how much of that development is concentrated on these couple of streets. Uh, next slide, please. Oh, yeah, missed that.
Colin, you wanna go ahead?
Oh, just, uh, so is, is this everything that's already been built or does this also include some permitted?
Uh, this is what.
Construction.
Yeah, this is, this is what has been built or in construction.
Okay, built or, gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah. So as we have um, as I just alluded to, most of this has happened in the T-five district and that basically means that a lot of the developable land within that um transect zone has already been built or is under construction. That means that subsequent development is mostly going to be happening in the T-four, T-three plus uh transect zones. So um knowing this, we've set, uh, we've, you know, uh been studying um areas, the potential areas of improvement for the form-based code as we move into a different sort of phase. We're going to see much more infill development, we're going to see a lot of um, we're gonna see uh smaller or more irregularly shaped parcels being built out. And some of these are uh things that we have, we've identified have to do, I've been coming out of conversations that we've been having about the details of developing such uh, such uh lots, um three-sided lots, ones with um strange, you know, like spaghetti entrances and then wider um uh backlot areas. Um, so, you know, we've been thinking about these, we've been thinking of ideas that we could be um improving and also trying to take in some general feedback and um some general uh uh sentiment that we've heard about uh the buildings that have been built here and this, um, and like the street experience and just the general usage of the code from designers, from commissioners, um, and from our consulting architect as well. So uh, next slide, please. So um, towards this uh effort, we have brought on Greg Rabidou, um, and he has been working with us for the last few months. He's been working on his own independent study, recently provided us with a table of contents and he's working towards a final report. Um, along the way, he's been doing literature review and um we've been having regular check-ins. And we've also been putting on a, a, a pair of roundtables, one of that has already occurred, the other one's coming up later on this week. And we've been engaging with designers and engineers and architects. Um, and then as well, and we've also planned to engage with some of the, the uh development community and local landowners within the form-based code district um to discuss some of these things that we, that I just brought up in a previous slide and also get their uh thoughts and experiences about what it has been like to work with the form-based code and with the zoning office as they've been working on projects and designing projects and are looking forward to projects within this area.
Can I just ask, the, um, what was the um sentiment amongst the builders about making some changes?
Oh, I think there's a lot of interest in, in.
And the list that we have, some of it seemed.
Yeah, some of the things were, um, that they've, uh, were things that they've already thought about and had concerns about. Others were things that they were kind of thinking, that'd be nice if you could change that for sure, it's maybe not our, our top priority, but I can see why you'd want to do that for other properties, maybe, um, that sort of thing. Um, or, you know, or we, we don't really, we don't really bother with that in our designs, so, you know, not really our, our, our problem, basically. And also, we heard a few um ideas that we hadn't thought of, of course, um, and that's why we, we, we held that um roundtable and that's why we're looking forward to the next one.
Right.
Nick, is, are any of the, are the roundtables open to commissioners, for example?
We're, we're trying to keep it mostly to the, just the, the folks who have been working, have past experience working in these or are gonna be working on the, on the, the projects themselves because we're trying to really just capture their experiences from at, like for their perspective as they've worked with the code or are anticipating working with the code.
Great.
So as we've been having these conversations uh with Greg and with some of their partners, um, we've kind of come to four areas and these came, also came out of some of the areas that we wanted to attack from, from our own uh perspective and experience. So one big one is allowing different types of streets to serve more functions than they are right now. You can imagine kind of a um, you know, um, you can imagine a, a street that is accessible for pedestrians and indeed created for their almost exclusive use that might still meet fire and safety access standards which would allow that to work um as something that could, you know, as, as a frontage, um, the same way that, you know, a stand, a more standard street like, like Market Street, um currently, that serves as a frontage. Or to allow for more flexibility when creating and designing cottage court developments, um, that sort of thing. We uh, we're looking at some, you know, areas like the, like the uh, the cohousing community on East Ave has come up a few times. Um, but also looking at some of the local developments um that, uh, and looking, trying to incorporate some of these sort of functional design goals with local vernacular and integrate them into something that's familiar, but also um opens up new opportunities for development and new opportunities for uh types of streets and new functions for streets and, and the built environment. I'm gonna jump ahead to number three, in pursuit of that, we've been kind of looking at this concept called the hierarchy of streets where we might be, uh, this comes out of a study that we did in um twenty seventeen with the HB. This uh would rank different streets by, you know, different uh types, primary, you know, secondary, we haven't really worked out the terms so much. But the idea would basically be that a street like Market Street, Dorset Street, um, and let's say the act, like the Mary Street and maybe the access between um the Barnes and Noble and the, and the DMV might all fall into different categories and then have sub, uh, and then each category might be able to relate, sort of unlock different um uses of the form-based code. So um, that would help to, in this, in this, in the same uh uh vein as number one, it would help to allow more flex, it would allow more flexibility for meeting certain established requirements, like you have to have frontage, you have to have emergency access, you have to have, you know, pedestrian access, you have to have all these sort of important things that we're not going to relax on. We want to find new and creative ways to help people meet those um while still making sure that these functions um are, these core functions are retained. Um, we want to look at it more as sort of unlocking new functions by rethinking some of the existing uh infrastructure that we have and how it relates to our regulatory structure. In a similar vein, uh, applying the same kind of logic to uh building envelope standards. Um, this is a more general uh issue that we heard raised in the prior roundtable. People had specific examples, but the general, you know, to their project, but the general feeling was that um building envelope standards could be real, could be, if, if they were to be relaxed, there may be more opportunities for different kinds of building forms, different, um, you know, uh, materials used, some of the things that we, that we would like to see more of. Um, and so we're kind of studying, continuing to study how we can do that without, again, relaxing some of the performance-based standards that we do need to see, um, such as, you know, efficient use of space, attractive design, um, health and safety, all that sort of stuff.
Can I just interject one thing quickly on that one? Helen, you asked uh earlier about, you know, what are we getting as feedback from the design community? This is one that they provided a fair amount of feedback on. And what we've heard from them, uh, you know, different people have different perspectives, but s- some of what we've heard is. But some of what we've heard is that in striving to create a clear regulation, it has created a pretty tight box for them to build within, both within the Form-based code itself, but then as the code relates to other regulations. So for example, I'll just pick one that is off the top of my head. We say that at least 30% of the upper store area must be windows. That is really close to the requirements, the maximum that can exist under energy codes before they have to go to another level of insulation across the entire building. And so the layout of that becomes a very tight box. Similarly, you know, we talk pretty clearly about heights and things like that. To have designs that are sort of on a diagonal is a little bit challenging, for example. So some of the feedback that we've gotten is that it is, what they've learned is that it is, that there are ways to get something done and that is, of course, what their clients are looking for. And sort of a related issue is when something is outside of that tight box that's written and also potentially allowable, it's possible, but it necessarily slows down the process because they're getting staff feedback and then they're going back to their, their, their client and then their client's talking to the builder and then they're coming back again. And that, that's, it's proving that there are obstacles to creativity. So some of the discussion has been exactly like, how could we have more, how could we open up more creativity so that they can, the designers can come to their developers and say, here's a more creative option that doesn't cost anymore in either dollars or time. So, and then that's the challenge we've now put to our consultant to look at that. So that's one of the pieces of feedback that we've been getting that I think was really useful and helpful.
So you've been meeting with architects and designers versus?
So we broke it into two groups. So the first group was engineers and designers. So landscape architects, architects, engineers, those who do the technical, creative and technical work. And then the second one is property owners and developers who, obviously they work closely together. Some of them work for the same companies, but often they, the viewpoints that they're bringing are a different set of perspectives, which is why we.
More monetary, like what can we afford to do?
Right.
Yeah, and also maybe perhaps a little bit more engaged with some of the process because they're the folks doing the project managing that Paul was alluding to that can sometimes, you know, result into this back and or involve this back and forth.
Nick, a quick question, and I'm thinking more abuses here. I know in the T5, and I can't remember if it's in the T4 too, that first story has to be commercial, yeah?
Yeah, that's right.
How are we doing with that? I mean, are we, is it, is it, I mean, is it functional that we're going to get some stuff there? I remember there was some debate about what was going to be allowed there and, you know, what the market will bear. How are we doing on that? Because is it just the T5 or is the T4?
Just the T5, the fairly limited area to Market Street, basically Market Street from Garden Street to Dorset Street. I think at a, at a high level, I think we're doing well. It, you know, it's the developer who's building the buildings immediately next to us was, knew that they had a client immediately in UVM and UVM MC to fill the residential components and have been working diligently on the other parts. It may not all happen on day one, but that's not, that's, that's not unexpected from them. I think that it is possible and likely that you will see some ideas and questions for tweaks to how the Form-based code works on the first floor in terms of what the requirements of individual tenant spaces are. When it was first adopted and put in place in 2015, 2016, the, there was not, many Form-based codes work off the cloth of what's around it, sort of the skeleton of a built environment. And we had the opportunity and the challenge of not having a built environment. And so there are certain requirements that were put in around doorways and things like that that served as a method of the city looking to get lots of activity on the street. Now that there are actual buildings and actual tenants, there may be more precise tools that we can look at that you, that may, as the property owners sort of get some experience in the next few months, may come to us and say, hey, we've got some ideas on how to make this space more engaging that are different tools than what we have, but that's where we are right now.
One, one could expect that once these buildings are occupied, occupied, the demand for services will become more clear. And that would guide, guide the market. I don't see much about renewable energy here. And your comment about the 30% glazing implies that it's not as well insulated as it could be. Because if they go up, they have to increase it. So how many of these new big blocks of built, these huge buildings have solar, for instance?
The city mandates new buildings that were, that were submitted to, excuse me. The city mandates that any building for which the designs were submitted to the Fire Marshal's Office after February of 2023 must have solar on the roof. A couple of the buildings that we're seeing here are, fall into that category. The other ones have to be solar ready and so the opportunity may present themselves. But buildings moving forward from that date do have to be solar. My implication was not to say that they're not as tight as they could be. The way that the energy code works is that there are different ways to reach that standard. And fewer windows is a way, it may not be a way that is, or triple pane may be a way to do it. I was just saying, I wasn't suggesting that our, our standards are not good. I was just saying that they butt up against other standards. And I'm not saying that ours need to be lessened, just that that is a reality that we've heard feedback.
Other standards are a little more demanding. It was my understanding.
It creates fewer, it creates a narrow set of paths to, to design.
What incentives could we offer to the buildings that are solar ready but not, not installed? I know.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great subject to chew on. I don't have ideas off the top of my head, but I think it's a, it's a great and, and useful subject to look into.
And I happen to know a group of volunteers who meet Fourth Wednesdays, who would love to answer that question. So I think Council of Challenge does as well. So you're welcome to join us anytime.
So I think you have more presentation.
Yeah, a little bit more. Yeah. So we were just talking about some of the, the areas of focus that have come out of the study so far. By the way, just to frame things up, we're about halfway through this project right now, having done some initial study, some, some conversations, about to have another conversation. And then we'll move towards wrapping up things in a report and a presentation. And of course, you folks will be getting that report and presentation when it's done. So the fourth point that we are sort of chewing on as we move into this latter stage is building height within the existing, within the rest of the Form-based code area. You know, there has been, right now, the, the current proposal and the LDR amendments is to raise building height along corridors and Shelburne Road and elsewhere. This, you know, that if, if that were to go forward, then the Form-based code transect zones are actually no longer going to be the highest, the areas you can build highest in the city. So for consistency's sake, that might be something that is worth looking at. And for other reasons as well, mostly having to do with some of the areas that are still open for redevelopment and infill. And we'll get to those in just a, yeah. So next slide, please, Paul. So as I alluded to, we'll get to those. We're looking into the future now for where the areas of expected development are. And we're looking at areas where we're going to see, you know, we're generally calling it infill, but it could be either redevelopment of, tear down, rebuild, it could be adaptation, it could be expansion, building literally in between areas, parking lots, there's a lot. Obviously, we've, I mentioned a few of these areas, such as the U-Mall and Staples Plaza. These are sort of distinct sub areas and indeed our architect is, Greg has broken these down into, into different sub, sub-study areas in his emerging report. But we do have, you know, we, and we do want to have uniform rules throughout the, the Form-based code area as a, as a general goal, so that we can keep the, you know, keep, keep things open for developers and keep the burden off of the DRB. That's the, the point of a code like this. There are, you know, there are certain sort of challenges or big ticket items that we're looking at, such as, you know, potential redevelopment of the U-Mall that we're trying to keep in mind. We want to make sure that the code is, is able, you know, that we want to make sure that it is applied evenly there. And so we, and also that we are, that we're taking advantage of large redevelopment opportunities like that. And so we've also been looking at things like the official map to make sure that a future roadway network will be built out according to how we need it to be built out.
Just one note to say, when we say looking into the future, that's the next project.
Yes.
Just to not conflate subjects.
Yeah, thanks, Paul.
Michael, you.
Yeah, with, with the redevelopment of the U-Mall and development on the north side of Williston, allow seven stories?
Well, that's something that we would have to.
Get your way.
That is something that we're going to wait for the final report on as well. But it's definitely one of the things that the recommendations we've been tossing around.
I would push for it.
I just have a question to go back to Duncan's concern about attracting businesses. And I'm curious in your research, Winuski has gone through this. And they had lots of empty building sites and they seem to have filled them up. So I'm just curious, have there been lessons learned from them that you have gathered? And are there other things that maybe they haven't done that elsewhere in the country where a, a community incentivizes in some monetary way, potentially, the ability for small businesses to move into what would be, you know, A-plus space, right? And I'm assuming it would be more expensive perhaps than the rent at the Blue Mall per square foot.
Naturally.
It's, yeah, the naturally affordable Blue Mall.
Marshall housing, yeah.
Rent a place would be very different in this. I'm just curious how much you've kind of.
So the success of areas like this is very much a public-private partnership. The folks who have been building some of the work here actually had some of the experience from Winuski and so they are bringing that with them. We are in, our department, Alana Blanchard, our community development director, and Jesse Baker, our city manager, are in regular communication with the property owners about all these kinds of things, about how do we encourage, how do we foster? In, we know that one of the, one of the things that the city does have a lever that we can assist with and is, is a, is a complex subject, but one that is important to business success, is parking management. So for businesses to be successful, there needs to be spaces that turn over near those businesses. Otherwise, people leave and when there's housing nearby, if the people just park, for example, in front of all those businesses all day, that can be a challenge. And so one of the things that we're working with them as an early action is doing sort of a short, medium and long-term parking management strategy to support those businesses to thrive. That's one small example of a long list that will be a ongoing one. But we're in very regular communication with, with them because it's shared, shared interest and success.
Thank you.
Have we gotten, I'm curious, from like any kind of like specific feedback on like certain thresholds of, you know, densities or heights or requirements that will be required to make certain like development projects feasible economically or not? Or is it more kind of, or kind of making rough guesses based on kind of comparable cities or similar places?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. It seems like in cases like this, where we're doing largely new construction, we're using Form-based code to foster an area and a neighborhood where really there hasn't one been, there hasn't been one before. There, there isn't necessarily like a, a silver bullet that we can, or really there isn't like a density that we can compare to a few block, like very similar blocks directly adjacent and make a really nice natural experiment of it. So I don't think there is like a rate of, you know, I would say residential square footage to commercial square footage on a given block or something like that, that we have clued in on as being like ideal. Part of the challenge, that does illustrate though, part of the, the challenge that, that faces us so far and will continue to be maybe be a little more salient, which is that, you know, their city, Form-based code is not limited just to the Market Street, Garden Street and, you know, eventually U-Mall areas. It's also a number of the neighborhoods that surround us. And so the density of those neighborhoods has a lot of bearing even on, you know, a few blocks away down here eventually and vice versa. So these are, these things, you know, you could describe it as fits and starts. You could also describe it as a series of feedback loops where, you know, a certain amount of density enables a certain amount of walkability, a certain amount of walkability encourages a certain amount of further density, and then that radiates outward. So we want to keep that, those ripples radiating outward, starting with this, this splash that we've made here.
Absolutely. And one other question I also, I, I've been hearing a lot of people talk about potential development from the U-Mall. That we, a very big project, I'm, I'm, I'm very intrigued. Is that something that like we're more kind of thinking, oh, hypothetically, that is a site that has some underutilized parking lots? Or is there like, is there an active developer interest in that? Or is it more kind of a hypothetical kind of?
Colin, I'd put it probably squarely exactly between those two exact holes that you just described. So there are new owners of the property as of a couple of years ago who are very much invested in the property because they saw opportunity there. There is not imminent action and activity with, to, to be happening other than the current reconstruction of what used to be the Sears Auto Building. But we are in pretty regular communication with them about, you know, we're letting, they're invited to participate in this work, they've been keeping tabs on it. So there's, there's not anything imminent, but they are interested in the medium term. And so we have been acting accordingly to make sure that we're both collaborative and prepared for when that time comes.
Oh, got it. Thanks for, thanks for the insight.
Yeah, I, I see you're looking for questions for, for planning commission. Before I get eaten by mosquitoes here, I'm beginning to notice I am outdoors. But I guess I am, I was enthused to hear that there was more discussion about pedestrian-only streets that do allow for emergency vehicles. I think one of the, one of the pieces I'd love to see a little bit more action on is how pedestrians move throughout the city. It, it, it's a good exercise really to like start at the, start at the elementary school and figure out how to get to Market Street from there. And see how pleasant or unpleasant the experience is, see how many curbs you have to climb over, see how narrow the sidewalks are. If you were to go through City Hall and perhaps exit the front of the building to a potential park across the street, how convenient is that for pedestrians? Or was it, you know, not really designed with pedestrians in mind? Every building that goes in, people will want to get around those buildings. Are you limiting them to the sidewalks? Or are there pedestrian-only spaces that allow you to kind of take short circuits through buildings? I think there's a lot of things that make, make cities really livable that still need to be incorporated. I, I think we're still looking this. I I think we're still looking this at this as a lot of individual buildings. But I think just kind of taking the pedestrian's perspective, put yourself, you know, put yourself on those streets and figure out, how do I get from here to there? And how could I make it more pleasant? And I think that would be an exercise, I think would be nice for Greg and the team of designers to show how how we can instead of designing a lot of individual buildings, how can we design an urban landscape? Because that's what I'd like to see a little bit more of.
That that's a really thoughtful comment. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Donna. And, you know, just I think to piggyback on that, I think you're right, like some of those like alleyways between buildings or cut throughs or go between buildings and through a courtyard, like those are things that feel very safe and kind of exciting for walkers. And I guess I just want to circle back on some of the things Ryan Doyle brought up because I think they make a lot of sense. That, you know, if there really are like slight grade changes between, you know, areas in front of buildings and sidewalk, like how that kind of creates like potentially barriers to people and movement. Sightlines around intersections, you know, and you know, just making sure our pedestrian spaces are really functioning the way they should be.
Yeah, and I have a little bit of experience now in how in some European cities segregating pedestrians from bicycles and traffic works. I wouldn't necessarily suggest the kind of curbing that they have in Copenhagen. But you do have to think about giving each of those entities their own space and making it very clear where each is supposed to be. You know, it's like it's it's pretty easy if you you know, happen to walk in in the wrong place in a European cities to get yelled at by other pedestrian. You know, you, you know, there there needs to be a place for bicycles to go and you can't just say, oh, you can't go here, you know, it's like they will go. So in a district of pedestrian ways, you know, making sure that the you know, that there's enough room for everybody on, you know, on the on in the streetscapes and as well as for bicycle parking, my goodness. That 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 was a bit of a sore thumb in some places I've been, bicycles everywhere, just everywhere, literally everywhere. Making it a little little hard to walk sometimes. There were so many bicycles in the way. Just hope we have that problem someday.
Thanks so much, Donna. That was great.
Yeah, can I sign off now? It's 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 super dark here.
You are very welcome to sign off. We will still have a quorum, so you can read the rest of the minutes when you get a chance later.
Yeah, because I.
Thank you, Donna.
Because I specifically wanted to hear this piece of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ducks in the background. And geese. Anyway, good night.
Good night. Michael?
Are we on this? I I think some of this has been raised before, which is there doesn't appear to be a lot of innovative variation in facades on what we have so far. Which is that's been expressed to me as a great disappointment by many residents who were involved in the workshops and so on, and those who served on the Form Based Code Committee. So that's one of the things that hasn't been answered and I don't know what can be done about it, but I but an architect with smarts, I'm sure can find a way to make it more interesting. And also following the curvature of a road rather than straight.
Anything else?
Uh, what one question I guess I have, I say, I mean, I'm not as familiar with the current codes and, you know, quite new to this, but is um is stuff like where someone's got to piggyback on Donna's comment about like pedestrian access? Is stuff like requiring pedestrian connectivity to existing road networks and existing neighborhoods? Something you can kind of bake into the form based code or is that more coming from somewhere else? Because I I guess I am kind of from respective is that there's definitely some areas of city with kind of higher density multifamily housing that aren't necessarily as well integrated with the surrounding neighborhoods as they could be from a pedestrian standpoint. And in a ways that may have been easier to have rectified when the building was going in and would be kind of hard to rectify once it's been installed. I'm so curious if that's the kind of would be within the scope of of those codes or or is that more kind of some other thing? Yeah.
Colin, I think that's a combination of the site design standards and or subdivision standards that exist in the regulations about connectivity and, you know, whether it's vehicle or pedestrian connectivity to its surroundings. That that is one part of it. The other part of it, Nick mentioned the city's official map. The official map is a companion regulatory tool to zoning that lay that lays out where future public infrastructure is expected when it's known. So that can be it could be roads, it could be recreation paths, it could be sidewalks, it could be water towers. It's basically any public infrastructure. And so where it's where there's a connection that is specifically known and and warranted. That's one where where that would go on the official map. So for example, the Planning Commission last year, Planning Commission and Council added a official map recreation, a shared use path connection from the bridge, the Bike Ped Bridge that's to be built across the U Mall property to Dorset Street because making that direct connection is a really high priority that is that the city wanted to make sure is very clearly stated there.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
And I'll add one third item too. We did address this a little bit in the RIFAMPT or the the new TDM Transportation Demand Management part of the the current amendments to the LDRs. And we did that in such a way that adds gives greater weight to or makes a priority of of establishing direct and separate pedestrian connections in a number of scenarios. Including when someone is redeveloping a property that has that's served by transit. And also in cases where they need to go above and beyond the Transportation Demand Management standards and they have to do some site plan stuff. We've sort of reordered those so that that pedestrian connections are the first thing that they should address as opposed to some of the others. But that's a really good reminder, though, as we continue to work on updates to the form based code that we should be keeping in mind those sorts of things for properties that that are specifically built to these standards because these standards offer more flexibility and they are just inherently designed more for pedestrian access already. So it should be easier to achieve and hopefully some of the designs that result from that sort of extra focus on pedestrian connectivity would be, you know, more 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 interesting and pleasant to navigate than some of the ones that we've got right now. Yeah. I think I don't really have anything else to add or do you have any more questions to?
I was just gonna see if we heard anything from the public on this item since we're kind of nearing the end of this item. Okay, Helen, do I see?
I just wanted to make a sort of an observation that I think a number of the ideas you've put forth and are discussing to me helps imagine that we are really could develop more of a community feeling and sense in this whole area with the little alleyways and just different ways that the public can interact with one another and feel comfortable doing that and hence developing more of a sense of community. And that's good. I think that relates to our city plan.
I'm glad to hear that. I'm looking forward to bringing this final report out for you folks in a few months.
Nick, in the early diagrams of this whole area, there was a a greenway along the wetland that is on the south side of Garden Street with a pedestrian pedestrian walkway and and quite a wide piece of greenery all the way along. Is that still in the works?
It's on the official map at the moment. I believe, yeah.
So, Michael, the the amount of green on both sides of the Potash Brook Tributary III was approved and made firm by the Army Corps of Engineer, the state wetlands. So that has been executed exactly as was proposed in that. There were allowances for pedestrian access specifically to go from the Goose Park across and over to connect to City Center Park and then back across to near the Trader Joe's Healthy Living Area. The connections to take place there both involve bridges because they cross important waterways. Those have been, those are approved TIFF projects and the voters have supported the funds to do that. So they're in design for construction.
Okay, so.
That would connect the Goose Park over across the this green area on sort of a diagonal for a boardwalk over to connect into City Center Park and then back again across to connect in basically behind where the new 112 Garden Street, that big one that just opened, which then gets right up to Garden Street.
Yeah, no, that so the the pedestrian walk or or sidewalk.
Boardwalk, yeah.
That's well, that's parallels, parallels Garden Street is still in the in the works.
So yes, it crosses the Potash Brook twice in doing so.
Okay.
Yeah. And then there's within the 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 housing that has been built, there's also community gardens back in there for their use and pedestrian access to that, but that's for their use.
Okay, well, thanks, Nick and Paul for that great update. Get it. We're looking forward to seeing it, seeing the recommendations. So we're gonna move into item six. It's the changes to the draft land development regulations that were presented to the City Council back in August. Duncan went and gave them to the them for us. And at the time, the City Council warned for a public hearing that's coming up next Monday night, the 16th. And at the time included the minor recommendations that are in the packet. So as our job is to amend the report that goes along with the land development regulations to make sure it includes these new items which are very clearly laid out in the memo. So I think our goal tonight is to have a discussion and then you know, if we're comfortable, move to approve the report.
Are those changes listed somewhere?
They are. There's a memo. It starts on page 18 of the packet. They're like in a separate memo on page 18. And they are extremely clearly laid out with items and many of which are typos and references.
They're minor.
Yeah, right. The only one of any, the only one of a little bit of substance which we which Nick had communicated with you back in August or, yeah, back in August, was that a prior version of the EV charging standards made their way into the public hearing, even though the commission had voted on an updated one. So what was given to council was the updated one that the commission had okayed even that we included accidentally an older version. Everything else is, as you can see, adding commas, correcting the letter C to D, that kind of stuff, but transparency is important.
Yeah, and I appreciate that very detailed email with all the information about the EV charging.
Well, if that's the case, I move to find the changes made to the Land Development Regulation Amendment Number 24 dash O1 through 24 dash 10 do not require alteration to the previously prepared Planning Commission reports.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I think Helen won the second. So any discussion on the item?
Good evening, Nick.
Good evening, everyone.
Yes, and if you could state your name.
I've had a little bit difficult hearing you.
Is your microphone on?
Light, bright, green. There's a little button.
Okay, now it's on.
Okay.
That's right. I didn't know if I if you could hear me. Okay, name's Rick Dahlstrom. I live at 1505 Dorset Street. I was here, purchased the property over three years ago. And it's it's a big lot, 44 acres. I wanted to build a house for my son on that property. And I was advised to wait for the LDR to be approved. So we waited. Unfortunately, the LDR that came down on us, kind of we've I personally kind of fell through a crack in that my property is like this, about 40% of it was NRP. And after the LDR came through, about 95% of my property became NRP. Although I mow about eight acres. The meadow in front of my house, between my house and Dorset Street, is a certified VT25. It's an FAA airport. But the whole property was made in, most of it, 95% of it was made in NRP, which causes a problem with building a second house. So we've been going through things. We finally got a permit to build a house. There's there's sewer septic system and all that, did all that engineering stuff. And now we're at the point where my son needs to get a mortgage. We've got the permit to build a house under the ADU part of the regulation. The ADU gives the primary house and 30% of the of the primary house can be an ADU. And my house is about 2,400 square feet, which means it could be about 800 square feet. Well, my son kind of turned to ask Paul if we could turn it over and make my house the ADU and his house primary dwelling. So 7,500 feet. Absurd, but that's your regulations. The problem that I've got right now is that because it's NRP, I can't take two acre or a one acre lot for him so that he can take that deed to the bank and get money to build his house because of the NRP stuff. I've been watching this amendment come through and and the both the engineers and the lawyer that's working on the project said there's a two acre carve out coming through with the amendment. And up until last week, we were relying on that. And all of a sudden, the lawyer was talking to Marla and she said, oh, it doesn't apply to NRP. So I I'm I'm in a catch 22 situation here because and and I confirmed that with Paul and and he said, yeah, it doesn't apply to NRP. And I went I said, so my property, first of all, shouldn't have been on RP because in fact, Paul here just he asked me after the last meeting a couple of years ago, he said, is there a house on that property? Yeah, there is a house, been there since 1967. It's it was a mistake making an NRP in the first place. Having said that, I don't mind the conservation. I've handed over a third of the property to the state as current use because I want it to be conservation. But that was my my option and it shouldn't have been the city taking my property. I like giving it for conservation. But my problem is with this amendment, it doesn't include me because of the NRP. I don't know if it's too late. Last time you said it was too late for me to come to the meeting. And unfortunately, it was because one lady said that it shouldn't be called an LDR, Land Development Regulation, which threw me off because I'm not a developer. He and she mentioned, maybe it should be land use regulation, which makes more sense, but I'm not developer, but that's the name of the the regulation. And I was late to the game two years ago and I'm kind of late now because last week we just found out that this two acre Because last week, we just found out that this two acre cutout didn't apply to NRP. So what can be done? I don't know. Two years ago, I went to this uh committee and and then I went to the city council. It was a three to two decision to approve the LDR. But they said, well, we'll be able to amend it in the future for small property owners. One way out is to spend tens of thousands of dollars to build a subdivision, which I don't I don't want to do that, you know? I mean, it doesn't it doesn't make sense. There was supposed to be a fix coming down the bike for people like me and my neighbor. Uh Noah Hyman, he says the same situation. All his land is is NRP in front of his house. His kids are younger, but we talked about it and eventually he might want to build a house for his kids. He doesn't know yet. What can be done? I don't know. I'm I'm hoping that there's some response and that something can be done at this late stage. Uh like I said, I I ran into this at David, I really I ran into this problem two years ago when I presented my case. Uh when I found out that I was going to be excluded by the NRP and it and it came to bite me again uh this time also. So I don't know what can be done. Hopefully something
Question for Paul. For um uh an NRP parcel that's more than fifteen acres, uh can't the owner build three?
So the in in the NR in the Natural Source Protection District, um a property more than fifteen acres can build on up to three lots. However, the homes need to be located um within one hundred feet of one another.
Up to three.
Up to three, up to three buildings.
Yeah.
Um because now every single unit building can be a duplex, so that's a change in Act forty seven, but they need to be within a hundred feet of one another. So that's what Aucleire Parcel C, for example, did was laid out the three lots next to one another. That's uh that's an available choice.
Isn't it say it has to be a subdivision? In the NRP, the only way for me to build is to create a subdivision or give my property to the city. You know, those were the two options, a subdivision which I don't want to, I don't want to do that. I don't want to because then you bring have to bring in engineers and tens of thousands of dollars just to build a subdivision that I don't want. So that I so that my son can then build a house.
I think you might be confused between subdivision and subdivide.
Well, that could be. I'm I'm not, I don't know your vocabulary all that well.
So so I
Like I said, the the land development I thought was for developers.
Any anytime you change the use, I know that I know the name of the document's not very clear. I mean, we'd like to change it, but it's complicated to change the names. We're stuck with the name for now, unfortunately. Um but you know, I believe Michael is right. Um in the NRP, if you have more than fifteen acres, you can have three houses and they can be on separate lots, but we don't, but we kind of purposely a long time ago decided they wouldn't be like really spread out. So you couldn't take your land and divide it into ten acre lots.
That's not the problem. That's not the, that's not
So they have to be next to each other.
The problem is that I don't get the carve out. I can't give him, I can't deed my, I can build the house, but the bank won't give him a loan on his house because he doesn't own the dirt.
So I
And it and it doesn't make much sense for me. I could build the house and and finance him, but then I own his house. And what good is that? You know, there's there's, see, I'm I'm between a rock and a hard place here.
No, and I think I think there might be some confusion because I believe Michael is correct in what he said in that if you had over fifteen acres, you can
I can have three buildings.
Three.
Up to three.
I can have up to three buildings. I can't divide off the, I can't give him the dirt.
Can't sell a piece to your son.
Because it's NRP. I can't sell him a piece of dirt. And if he get, if he doesn't own the dirt, then the bank is not going to give him the money to build the house.
I guess there's a couple of things. I mean, first, um we're on kind of a separate item. So the the motion on the table is just about this report that's going to go to them. So I mean, just to be clear, but then um you know, you do have a concern related to the current LDRs. That at this point are are technically with the city council. So we have um already made all our changes and and given it to them. And so it's a little bit out of our hands, like what the city council chooses to do. We do, we are going to be talking a little bit about the master plan carve out, um which really only applies to a spot where you have to do a master plan, which doesn't apply to you because it's you're in the you're in the NRP. So I don't know what the answer is.
I don't know your process. I was I just had the advice of of one of the councils to come to your meeting.
No, and I think and I think that it, I think it makes sense. It sounds like um like I don't know the nuances of the three buildings and whether or not you can sell the land or not. That's a little beyond.
A ninety nine year lease on the land and that would satisfy the bank.
I I I just looked up Article nine, section B two. When a lot is fifteen acres of more contiguous area, the developer may allow a subdivision of no more than three lots and construction of no more than three dwelling units. Is that what we're talking about, the three buildings? Is that that?
But he only wants to do one building and one subdivision, one lot.
But does it say anything about selling the property?
I mean, it's a subdivision of three lots.
Build three more houses just to own them.
Colin, you said it says lots. I mean, I feel like this is kind of a nuance of of the language. I mean, what Colin just read is that you could create three lots.
Yeah, I haven't read the entire thing through.
Any individual lot can have a different owner. So I don't, I don't understand. Is that right? How close they need to be, but you you know, you have enough land to have the two buildings or two.
Yeah, I've got, I've got this much space. My house is here and and your regulations wants the other house right here, hundred feet.
So what you're saying is you don't like the fact that it has to be so close to your
Well, actually, the septic is over here.
Because that's actually a different issue.
The house here and run the septic over to there.
So so I think we've determined you can have a separate lot for your son. You can create a separate lot that he could own.
No, I can't. According to regulations will not allow me to have a separate lot unless I do a subdivision. Which would again cost me tens of thousands of dollars to do subdividing. I can't just, the the amendment has a carve out for non-NRP people.
In or anytime that you create another lot, it's called a subdivision. That's just the word. You're subdividing into two properties. And when you do that, there are some fees associated with that to like have have it surveyed. You know, um a title, having the official, like the map of it, the plat, go and get recorded. So I mean, those fees would happen anytime anyone, even if you did a master plan carve out, anytime you're creating two lots, there's that kind of process that you go through. Um whether there's a carve out, like the carve out for the master plan is kind of a different thing. It's just um uh the idea is that a a portion, a small portion of the land wouldn't have to go through all of the, all of the regulations um that it would have had to do of the master plan. What you're talking about, anytime you would take a piece of land and create more than one lot, that's called a subdivision. And it does require
Build extra houses on your property. Is that a subdivision?
Well, it sounds like you don't want to do that.
I can't do that by your regulations. I can't subdivide all I can, but
You you I think it it says like the three dwelling, you can up to three dwelling units. The the whole caveat is they have to be a hundred feet apart from each other, but you can still still sell the land. It doesn't have to be close to the existing houses, the way I'm reading this, but I might be mistaken, uh but.
No, Colin, I think you're right. So are you just saying you don't want your your son's house to be so close to yours? Is that your problem? Because
Hundred feet is
It sounds like you can, you can create a separate lot for the separate house.
You do two lots and then have the farthest one, then they'd be two hundred feet away.
Yeah, we're gonna Actually, we're gonna put a barn that's about a hundred and seventy five feet between our houses with a bedroom and a bathroom in it to make it legal.
But it sounds like you don't have a problem then. It sounds like you have a, I don't, I guess I don't understand the problem. Sounds like you figured it out.
Is that the lawyer said that I can't sell him a piece of dirt. Because I'm in an NRP. If that's not the case, I'll talk to the lawyer and tell him the
Yeah, I think um The section, the section that Colin cited, I think you should take another look at. Um because if you create another lot, that's the same as selling someone a piece of dirt. That's but
There might be some confusion of the lawyer in that there certainly are law restrictions on which parts of dirt you can sell and stuff like that, I guess. Maybe that is causing, perhaps that's causing some confusion there. It is definitely like a very specific uh not carve out, but like it's a very specific set of regulations here. But yeah, I I I I'm not, I I'm not a lawyer. Or have I spoke, nor have I spoken with your lawyer, so I don't really know what's going on.
Yeah, no, thank you, Colin. That was really helpful.
Just to clarify, if does the one lot that he wants to create have to be a hundred feet not more than a hundred feet from his present house?
Yeah, well, you can create up to three lots. They need to be uh within a hundred feet
Of each other.
Of of The DRB, you know, that's the DRB's job to interpret how that means, but that could be a triangle, it could be potentially three in a row. That's
Yeah, the idea is
Yes, they they are intended to be proximate in the regulations.
And he could build in the one that's furthest.
Well, that's what he just told us he was gonna do. Sounds like he figured it out.
But Rick, you you can't get away from having to do, make a subdivision.
The hu- the hundred foot part is not a problem. We have the permit to build the house. And the problem is the dirt underneath. The lawyer said
I understand that.
Okay, so that 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 is my only issue. If you say that by building another house on the property, which is allowed by the NR in the NRP within a hundred feet, by building that, that creates a separate lot.
So so there's a process to create a separate lot that you will have to go through. And that is, it involves a surveyor and a lawyer and a deed and, you know, making sure it meets the standard. So I mean, there's a process. It's not, um so the permit you have right now doesn't sound like it does that. It didn't, it didn't create the lots.
No, it was just
Yeah, so it sounds like you you need to just maybe go like understand the thing Conrad and then um go through that process of creating the lots.
Right. So so just to be clear, in this instance, I think what Mr. The the path that Mr. Dahlstrom chose to do was the 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 new, one of the buildings is technically an accessory dwelling unit, which falls into a slightly different category of state and local law, which is that it can be on the same parcel. It's just accessory as a as a as a unit. Happens in this case to be a full sized house. And so I think the challenge that he's facing is that an accessory dwelling unit by definition is on the same lot as the principal unit. That is the definition of an accessory dwelling unit. In order to make it not accessory and to be its own standalone, it needs to go through, it needs to meet all the standards of a of a subdivision and of the NRP. It doesn't sort of go into this uh special category of an accessory dwelling unit. And that that brings with it the hundred feet, it brings with it the um the 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 maximum of three lots, the the requirements on the rest of the land to have a demonstration of how it's um uh has a conservation plan for it. So that's, that's, I think, the challenge that uh and I don't know the specifics and would be happy to um speak with you and your attorney to understand if there's if there's a nuance that we're missing, but I think broadly, it's under the accessory dwelling unit category right now. And I think that they're interested in exploring a different path. Um I don't know if they've explored um and whether you've explored any kind of condo type ownership structure that might allow for um more in the for them to exist on the same lot, but have different ownership. Um I I don't know, but we'd be happy to chat with you about that as well.
I'll sit down with you. Yeah, another issue with the subdivision is that my property is landlocked in that I have a right of way to get to Dorset Street for my driveway. So that's another issue. It is is that I don't have a, I can't make a city road there. So it's just a driveway. Uh thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Very good.
Are you going to get together with your attorney and planning and zoning to try and sort this out?
Got to figure something out here.
Please do.
But I I think Paul had
The diggers coming
Paul Paul um Connor got something there about condominium uh where you you could sell the building to your son, but not the land.
Yeah, good, good luck figuring it out. Um, okay, we have a motion on the table about the report. Any discussion on the report? Okay, on favor?
Uh this is the, wait, this is all the little changes we're talking about the city council made from earlier. Oh, yes, he's I, yeah.
Perfect, unanimous. Okay, number seven, the LDR amendments. Um so we talked about this at the last meeting, so we're going to continue the review of potential options um to the city council on the minimum density and master plan requirements. So this was the um where Michael, you you sounded like um you felt like this was described differently than it is in the council. Now, it's and Tim just snuck out right under the wire, so he's not going to weigh in.
Michael, can you turn your mic on? I think it might be off.
Sorry about that. There's a a lot of detail in what's in the, what's written in the packet. Um because it can, it's refers to the concept of land reserved for future use, which I think we had talked about as undesigned land in the interim last time.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. We were just trying to find clear words and reserve for future use says very clearly no, no plan right now. But you can choose to, different words are available. We were just trying to be very, as as plain English as we could be.
So you, if a landowner chooses to permanently conserve or leave open undeveloped, uh that land that's reserved for future use, uh then the DRB would consider that an acceptable way to do the master plan.
That's what I said at the last meeting, yes.
Yeah.
And um we reviewed the language and we felt that there was an opportunity to be a little bit more clear on that matter. And so one of the recommendations that we have, and I'm trying to, I was trying to synthesize things for the packet here. In the bullets, there there's some bullets of some recommendations in the staff memo. So under bullet number two, it says master plan development for consideration, two additional items that could be included. One, show any land uh to be conveyed as dedicated open space to the city or a land trust. So this would be a way to make clear um in whenever you're doing a master plan, this is being conveyed permanently. And so that would make clear that the DRB does not need to be looking at, other than the ability to access it for its conservation purposes. It doesn't, it's off the table. So we were, we thought that that was an opportunity to be more clear. That has been the practice to say if a piece of land is going to be permanently conserved, the board says, okay, great. And then, but this this puts that in writing, so it's clear. And then the second one has the the B there, show land designated as reserved for future use. This is the source of your discussion, most of your discussion last meeting, which is I own twenty acres of land. I have considered and I know what I want to do right now for ten acres of that, ten acres of it, I'm not prepared to make a decision on right now. I don't want to go through the expenditure of master planning it. And that was your discussion about what is it, wh- what do you, what is appropriate to require for that?
Hmm.
For the, for the ten acres that they're not ready to do a thorough planning on. So our recommendations or the ideas that we came up with based on your discussion last time was to give two options, and perhaps those two options are not just options for council, but perhaps developer options. The first of those.
Not develop a landowner option.
Landowner option, excuse me. Uh, or applicant option, I'll say even more though, because it's not, it's not even always the landowner. Um, the first one would be demonstrate that the future development potential of the area being reserved is not diminished. So that could be in some cases be a really simple uh case. So there could be a case, for example, let's say I had a twelve acre parcel and I wanted to build on four of it. Those four are on one side of a big wetland complex and the remaining eight are on the other side of a wetland complex. In this instance, the applicant could simply say, I'm not touching everything east of the wetland. Nothing is being diminished about its ability to be built because the wetland is already the barrier. So what I, whatever I do on these four has no bearing on the other eight. And that might be the end of the conversation. So that's why we thought that could be a really simple way to do it. The second option in there would be what we're proposing to call an illustrative plan. And we've been tweaking the words even since um since what what went in out in your packet, but basically show in in a bubble diagram uh where you would show the rights of way for roads and then where your hazards are from from the mapping that exists. And then a feasible bubble diagram of uh uh housing civic space stormwater.
Can I draw the bubble diagram myself, just freehand?
Well, I mean, it would still have to be on a, on a map that's drawn, that's to scale.
I mean.
So it would need to be, if you're doing a subdivision, you've already hired an engineer. So you would need some level of scale associated with it, but the use of the word bubble diagram and uh we've actually updated feasible. We thought maybe there's a slightly better word that we could use, which was um uh instead of feasible layout, it would be a uh feasible arrangement um to basically just show, show that you're not creating something silly. If 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 what you're retaining and saying for future use is seventy-three feet wide by nine hundred feet long, there's no way to put, to to build that appropriately. And so, you know, rather than sort of create odd slices, this is a check against that. You could propose just to do the first one. The the reason for having both of these in there is that the D R B would be able to ask for that second one. Um, and the reason that we think that's important is uh if somebody doesn't agree with that first one, the non-diminishment, we would not want that to become an arms race without guidance about what they have to prove to the D R B or to a court because people get appealed all the time. So creating this illustrative plan as this is the other alternative spells out the maximum extent of what we're looking for. If it just says demonstrate that it's not diminished, conceivably, that could go way up to the Supreme Court because, you know, somebody might say, I think it is diminished. And so this creates some guideposts to it.
Uh, well, one, so just to clarify, so, okay, uh, may, I I'm just gonna use, I, on the packet, what we've been calling option one is option two.
Right, I apologize. We, yeah.
The 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 simple option, like the simple one.
Yeah.
When you say demonstrate, is that literally as simple as just like, could that be a paragraph in writing? Or is that a, just a simpler engineering plan?
Um. I I think that the reason in this one specific instance, um can you, can you put that up on the screen? In this instance, um our thinking was make it really simple because depending on the circumstance, it might be really simple. Maybe there is a railway dividing the property in two. And so uh s- saying it's not diminished can be really, really simple. In some cases, it may, they may want to show something. And the backup to that is option one, which is if it's not really all that clear whether it's diminished, then they could do this illu- illustrative plan. So it gives, it gives a pathway if option two doesn't work, or if for some reason a property owner wants to be a little bit ahead of it and wants to get it out a little bit more publicly, what they're, what they're conceptually thinking about for the future.
So these three options go with number three, land reserved for future use?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. And so I think upon further thinking, we're basically thinking option three is what we would recommend, but of course, council asked you, not us. Should have been asked us too.
Choose, they could try option two in cases where it's fairly straightforward that would work. Otherwise, if there was some debate, they would go to option one, or the D R B would say.
So initially, when when the planning half of our staff was thinking about it, we were thinking of two options for council, and then we ran it by our development review staff, and our development review staff said, why don't you give them both as options? And that way, different properties can have different reasons why they might pick one or the other. Um, and there's a backup for the D R B so that they're not having a loosey conversation that winds up in a court case about what does the word diminish mean.
And then what is the minimum required to demonstrate? Because if you have to demonstrate that it's accessible, uh, there are a lot of other requirements in the in the L D Rs.
Right.
About what demonstrating means. You have to show all kinds of things. That's why I made that point that if uh if the land for, the land for future use is just designated as such, then uh and and the master plan is done for the portion of the property that the owner or developer wants to develop, you can't do anything with that land for future use for the next ten years because it's um it's designated as he, the landowner or developer does not want to develop it.
So so certainly, Michael, another option that th- this is your recommendation. So another option could be demonstrated that the remaining piece of land has a legal right of access. That is the minimum under the state law. You can't create a parcel that doesn't have a legal right of access. You could leave it at that.
Hmm.
It it might be a oddly shaped lot, but you could leave it at that if you chose. Or the council could, so.
I like these options. Michael, are you concerned that like somebody wouldn't be allowed to conserve the undeveloped, like this, what are we calling it? Future area of reserved for future? I mean, because I think somebody could conserve something at any time. It doesn't matter if it's in a master plan or not.
They could conserve it, but uh with uh with some kind of con- conservation easement.
Yeah. So the only thing that ten years is really just about if somebody wants to put more stuff on it, like more buildings or more roads. That's when they would have to come back in and amend their master plan. But if they're just gonna continue.
The master plan doesn't cover those uh additional undeveloped land. It only covers the part of the.
Right. And as long as you're not trying to build more stuff on it, it's, it just stays the way it is forever. You don't need to renew the master plan or.
Until you sell it. I mean, if you sold the property, then the.
Sold or developed it.
The owner could develop it.
But then they would have to go back in for a new master plan, like or like.
So somebody got a master plan for part of their property and then they sold the property, the decision goes with the land. Doesn't matter who owns it. The new owner would be subject to the same, if you did this ten year thing, they would not be eligible to m- make use of it for ten years to build on the remaining portion of it.
Right.
The reason for the ten years is if there's not the ten years, and it's not a perfect tool, but if there's not the ten years, there's not, then there's not really much value to a master plan at all because somebody could just come in, say, I want to add one more acre, two more acres, one more acre after that, three more acres. So unless there's something that's sort of a uh uh an incentive to either plan or not plan. Yeah.
Well, you know, we. Michael, my my, my thought was that you you were concerned about it being onerous on the property owner. Isn't that what the basis of this was?
Uh.
You were concerned about them having to do a master plan on land that they weren't gonna do anything with it now.
One of my concerns.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it looks like the, I mean, the illustrative plan, how how detail, how how onerous is that? Is it?
Well, is it the whole point, though, we just suggested is that now we have option two, not everyone, like it's it's the illustrative plan, which is a bit more onerous. I mean, not quite as bad as master plan, but it's still a bit complicated.
No, I.
The hope is a lot of people won't use it at all.
I agree with the two options. I think they're, I think they're good. I'm just, I'm I'm wondering what, what.
What, you have an objection to this? All the landowner has to do is what's, what, there's a statutory requirement to show that there's um what would, what was the terminology you used?
Reserve.
No.
That that there's a legal right of access. That's an option two. But that could paint the property into a corner.
What don't you like about option two? It seems pretty simple.
It's tell me what what it, what it means by shall demonstrate.
Well, I think it means you can get there and it's like a reasonable size, like, you know, in shape, like he would just.
Not gonna be good enough for the D R B.
Why not?
Well, you try, telling the D R B what you just said.
I I think that Paul raised the the uh example of a property that's pretty straightforward. Got a wetland down the middle. You're gonna develop this side. You're not gonna develop this side.
Hmm.
That's something where option two works. I think that's the whole point of that. If it's more complicated than that, then you defer to option one.
Would there be some ability, because I I I do somewhat agree with Michael, that shall demonstrate is perhaps intentionally vague, but is very vague. My understanding of Michael's objection is that be, is that maybe it does, option two will become kind of complicated because shall demonstrate. Is there any way we can add more language to clarify what shall demonstrate means, or does that create more problems than it solves?
I think Colin, that that's, so
That's already.
We we've gone around on that one and and I I hear the problem and I think our solution to that problem was option one.
Gotcha.
Because I think as soon as you start defining it more, then you're requiring that submit more. And then it's an unclear what that submittal is. And so that's where we came to option one uh or something like it gives parameters for defining that. So, you know, I guess we were envisioning that if somebody came to sketch plan to the D R B and said uh we are demonstrating it by a wetland dividing it or by this way, then the board can say, sounds good, or we don't think so. We don't think that, we don't, we don't think that you are able to demonstrate it just through your words. Please use option one. Because to add words to option two basically just brings you to option one. If in some way that we were trying really hard to find a way that has the minimum requirements. To to your question Duncan about what what is, what does option one do? Um hazards and level one, um the more you put into it, the more you get out of it, but you could use our city mapping. So the mapping is all there to just show that. The feasible configuration of the street capable, street rights of way capable of meeting the requirements of the L D R, that's probably the biggest one. You don't have to do anything about street design, but you would have to show in this instance, the city's regulations say that streets either need to be connected or if their dead ends not more than two hundred feet. So you'd have to show conceptually how you would connect that, or if you're not gonna connect it, how your dead ends would be less than, no more than two hundred feet. And then the rest of it, you're just doing a bubble diagram, making sure that you've thought about the fact, you know, we could just say a du- a bubble diagram showing the remainder. We've heard from you all that the import, that civic space is an important thing. So we wanted to make sure that from day one, they're thinking about it and not having it be the leftover of the last thing that they ever think about. So it's basically, you know, think about ten percent to civic space, five percent, not at the top of the hill, but at the bottom of the hill for stormwater and the rest of it uh that you would be able to uh uh achieve the minimum density. Basically, you know, if you're in the low scale neighborhood, you'd say, okay, well, I could put a bunch of fourplexes on quarter acre lots. Um, and you wouldn't have to show the lots, but you just sort of show, you know, here's a five acre area. My assumption in there is that uh we could put, you know, twenty fourplexes in there um because we've got, you know, the, our bubble is at least eighty feet deep. That that's, that's what we're thinking about. Um, we're welcoming feedback from you on whether that's the right level. And if it is the right level, are we saying it well? But that's, that's the idea. And again, we're just trying to meet what you were asking and what council's asking for. So we don't have to do any of these.
I guess I would, I mean, someone said earlier that, you know, if somebody's going through a master plan and subdivision process, they already have a map. They already have somebody like a technical person who's like laying this stuff out and knows the rules. Like if you're already doing all that and you have it all set up, this is like a pretty small additional task. Like, I'm just thinking about like my projects. Like, once you've got all that stuff in there and in your map, like circling a couple areas and spending twenty minutes thinking about like how the roads connect is not a big deal when it comes down to it. Like you, you're already doing this whole big plan and printing sheets and had the survey and um.
For the developed area.
Yeah, for the developed area. It's like just right there. Like it's already all in there. Like this feels like a reasonable thing to be asking, especially because we've got this option two, which is like a, an easy way of doing it. Um, Colin?
So 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 just to make sure I understand correctly, there isn't really a situation in which someone would be mulling over these two options in which they haven't already gotten a professional grade map of some of their properties? Am I correct?
Yeah, it seems pretty unlikely that somebody would be going through any kind of like lot subdivision.
Well, I guess.
Without having some of this already.
I guess I'm confused was, 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 was perhaps, was this something that we're gonna be using as the whole two acre carve out? Is, could, they might end up in this one?
Right. So Colin, thanks for bringing that up. That's, that's the other half of this. So um Michael, I think you had flagged um to the council that in the uh two acre carve out um you, or sorry, excuse me, in the minimum density, which is connected into the carve out because it's still, you have to show for the balance of it in the draft, uh streets, stormwater and open spaces. And I think you were concerned through the minimum density that what a stormwater mean, does that mean designing a stormwater system and things like that? Um, if I'm, if I'm.
No, I'm sure there's being allowing, allowing for it. That.
Right, but you were concerned about the level, the level of depth of engineering that would be needed to demonstrate, to prove that. So in this draft, Colin, um what we're proposing to do is apply these same option one and option two to two different scenarios. A, if you're choosing to have a uh reserved unbuilt portion of your master plan, B, separate from that, if you choose to do the carve out of your master plan, so you take a two acre slice, what do you have to demonstrate for the parcel, the remaining parcel? So you have a ten acre parcel, you carve out two acres. What do you need to do for the remaining eight? That was one of the other concerns raised. So our suggestion in here is to use these exact same two options in either scenario because they're basically the same situation. You're choosing not to build and rather than have two separate sets of standards that kind of sort of are similar. This is where things get really messy with the D R B when they're trying to figure out why there's two different sets of standards for similar circumstances. So that would be our proposal to use these same in both of those scenarios.
Let, let's say I'm, I'm the landowner and uh I'm very concerned about climate change and how it's going to affect future generations, particularly my children and my grandchildren. Uh, and I'm, I'm, I'm a responsible uh citizen and I want to mitigate um by keeping open space on my property. Um, but as was mentioned today, maybe I've got these thirty acres and um I want to build a couple of houses for my children on three acres. Um, why do I have to uh demonstrate that the uh the part that I want to leave open for good uh climate action, climate change mitigation reasons, or why am I required to do anything else other than? Why am I required to do anything else other than that's what I want to do? After I've, I've made the, the master plan for the, for the three acres or the, the couple of houses for my children. That's one, a separate piece. The rest, uh, it's for, it's for posterity. It's for climate change mitigation. Why would I, why, why didn't I do anything else?
Wasn't that option two? You've identified it as reserved for future use.
Yeah, but, uh.
You still have to do this stuff for the three acres.
Yes. If all I have to do is, um. Go back to it.
But Michael, are you saying, are you actively saying that you're taking that other land, putting it in conservation or you're just not doing?
I don't want to go through the, through the agony and expense, uh, uh, of creating a conservation easement. Finding somebody to hold that easement because I can't, I own the land. The land remains mine, but I have to abide by, by the conditions of whatever.
But if it's buildable land and eventually you might sell it.
Buildable land is also open land.
No, I know that. But if it's land that's buildable in the city, we talked about this last time, is having some sort of protection for the city to say, okay, that land eventually, if you sell it, could be buildable.
You want to balance conserva, um, housing and conservation. Uh, well, uh, you know, rather than that, we should say that we, there needs to be a balance between housing and climate, climate change mitigation. Or there needs to be a balance between housing and wildlife species, uh, protection and survival. You know, there's all kinds of things like that, which for me personally, uh, are more important than, uh, than other aspects of what we're discussing. But I, I, we need that flexibility.
I think there is, I mean, there's quite a bit of flexibility in these options here. I guess I'm just not completely sure what you're.
Still have to hire somebody to, to draft something and put it in with your master plan.
If you have two acres and you're subdividing it, you still have to hire somebody to like do that. Like. You can't.
For, for, for your three acres or whatever it is, yes.
Yeah. So what you're doing for the rest is like zooming out a tiny bit and like putting a couple of circles on the map. It's like not. I mean, you're already.
That's all you have to do and you.
I mean, that's what it looks like to me. I mean, you're already hiring someone to like do a subdivision of like.
And it sounds like in a lot of cases, if you can get option two to apply, you, you, you don't even have to draw the circles necessarily in some cases.
So if, if that's the, if that's your opinion, let's have the language, the actual language in, in, uh. In these land management regulations, land use regulations. But I'm, I'm.
Not sure what you're looking.
Well, I think they're saying that this language does say that.
Yeah.
I don't, um.
Michael, let me, let me present a scenario to the scenario you just gave me. You had how many acres?
Thirty.
Thirty acres. You've got three, your three acre carve out. That 30 acres is developable land, but you decide not to develop it. Are you okay if? If we allow that landlord to take those three acre parcels and pretty much denude or make the rest of the parcel not usable because they block all the access? Are you okay with that?
Why would I do that if I, if I, if conservation and open spaces?
No, what I'm saying is that they take the three acres and they put them somewhere, the parts, the parcels prevent access to the rest of the property. So it couldn't be developed. You're okay with that? In other words, we lose the ability to develop that later on down the road.
Future.
Yeah.
The next landowner.
That's what, that's in my mind, that's what we're trying to prevent.
Yeah.
We're not necessarily.
It's my land.
Until you sell it.
Till you sell.
No, no, it's my land.
Yeah.
So I'll put my house wherever I want.
Well, we've already got a whole lot of other.
A landowner would have to be pretty stupid to devalue the rest by. Parking his development somewhere, which makes the rest of it un, inaccessible or, or, or useless.
Yeah, I guess.
Unless it doesn't, because he wants to conserve.
So let's just, let's look at the language, Michael. You said, let's look at the language. So.
So this is basically the same was in your packet, but, um, this is with a little more time that staffs had with it. And specifically having Kelsey's brain back because she's. On vacation today, so we were able to play with it a little bit more and she's much better at this stuff. This is very similar language to what was in your packet, but you asked for what's the latest and greatest. This is the latest and greatest where we.
Why don't we have future development and conservation potential? Right? Talk about develop, develop, and there's no, no discussion about, about the importance of, to all of us.
The whole point is that there's nothing, if there's not, if you're not doing anything to it, then you're not.
Let me read the rest of it.
The bubble.
Michael, I feel like you're just being difficult without any reason for it. Like.
I'm not sure what you're.
The whole point is that this, this applies to a spot that isn't having development on it. So I, I guess I just don't understand.
Or I guess also my, if, if retired, future conservation potential, why? I, I guess I'm a little. If you want to conserve it in the future. Is, is your concern that you, you want to allow people to easily conserve in the future who don't want to conserve it now? Like, is that what we're, is that perhaps to hang up or?
I don't know. Okay. Well, let's, let's look at the, okay.
Go ahead. Let's get that up on the.
Yeah, let's look at the language. Thank you, Paul.
So this is the same section here. Um, so future.
This is like option one.
This is right. I flipped them here just because, so, um. What was two is now one. Future development bench is not diminished. Or. Future development potential goes through this and the wording's been tweaked slightly. So we say feature, um, feasible configuration and arrangement. We are trying to thread a needle of words that. That don't lead down a rabbit hole of more and more and more engineering, but are not so milquetoast that they don't mean anything. And then here it says the board may require submission and an Oscar plan. Is it unclear if the reserve area's reserve is diminished?
I think that's what we'd asked for last time.
And then up, up above, um, we talked about what goes into a master plan. So the things that are proposed to be added into your, into your development plan of your master plan. Um, are land to be conveyed for conservation. So you can be clear as. That if you're conveying something for conservation, then that's clear to the board that that's that category. And then the specific land designated for future use. So you can assign, you could.
Designated as reserved for future use.
And that's good for.
Cannot be, not that cannot, or cannot be included in the master plan or development within 10.
Yeah.
Years of the initial approval of the master plan. Yeah, that, and then once the 10 years is expired, if you don't do anything.
So if, let's say in the, in this scenario, I had an idea for building on four acres of my land. And then I designated the remainder 20 acres as reserved for future use. In my first master plan. I would, um, show that as reserved for future use. I, let's say I build those four acres in the next six years. I don't have to do anything. My master plan is done. I don't need to renew something. You're only renewing something if you want to be doing more later. So maybe you only built on two of those acres. And so you need to renew your master plan, or maybe now after 10 years. You, you've sold a piece of land and they want to do something with that reserve for future use.
When you die, your children get it.
And then they have different opinions.
So where is the combination of one and two?
Uh, that is the.
Three.
That's the three. The board may require a submission of.
Oh, okay.
So the option one and two, this is the draft language that the, uh. Excuse me, um. The applicant shall demonstrate one or two.
And three says.
So that was option three was to make it one or two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And then, um, just the last piece of this to connect all the puzzle pieces together. Um, under subdivision where you had had the minimum density before. One, we are recommending that it be very clear when minimum density does not apply. So we thought that that was an opportunity to clarify this. So. Minimum density does not apply in the natural resource protection district. It does not apply to land designated for, um. Reserve for future use, uh, other than the demonstration that we just talked, other than what we just showed, the bubble diagram. Uh, land offered as for, uh, permanent open space. Land parcels less than two acres in size that already exists. So that was, that's already baked in, but we were trying to be more clear about it. And the carve out of two acres.
Well, and then we can get to the minimum density as well, because the, some, some councillors felt that, and I do, as you know. I don't, I, I didn't think it's feasible, um, reasonable to force, uh, landowner to build more than he wants. You know, and, and some of the councillors used, I used the word force, they used the word coercive, it's too coercive. Why, why force a landowner? Into a minimum density requirement, particularly the one which is four and eight, uh, which is, gets really dense.
Well, we've, we've actually talked about this, Mike. Um. No, no one's forcing anyone, no one's forcing anyone to build more than they want to. But if they're going to build, they have to build close enough together so that you're using the land efficiently. And you're not just sprawling all out with lots of big yards. I mean, that was. A decision that we had talked about and I, and I think you were in support of kind of smart development. So if you're going to develop, have it.
Yeah.
In a smaller space. That's all minimum density does. It doesn't say you have to build a certain number of. Units or over a certain amount of area.
Well, and, and let me just add to that, that here it says demonstrate that it reserves adequate space and access to accommodate. The very simple way to do it under the new act 47 and act 181 is. Anywhere where that is served by water and sewer, which is all the areas we're talking about. A fourplex is allowed on the same lot size as a single unit building. So you could say in your subdivision application, I'm creating six one acre lots. And all of them could be fourplexes. You've demonstrated minimum density of four units an acre. You may not build that, but you've demonstrated that you've reserved that ability on a one acre lot.
But your master plan has to show. That you're building. To the minimum.
That.
You're not required. Oh.
Well, you're, if, if your master plan is. Your master plan needs to show that you've reserved the space. When you actually go to build. Then, you know, that, that's when you, like in, in your phases, that's when you would, um. Build it at that, at that density. And that's, that was the decision that you all made back in 2022, that was just being carried forward. The TND and the conservation PUD both have that minimum density in it. So.
Both have the same workaround as well. Which is don't build, what you don't want to build and wait 10 years.
Right. Which is in here.
So, uh, do you think eight units per acre is, is reasonable? I don't think so. It's, that's a high density.
I mean, essentially that is saying show half acre lots with four places on.
The four, is, where did we, where did we get the four acres and the four and eight acres from? I know the four acres we got from conservation PUD.
That's in both your conservation PUD and the current mandatory traditional neighborhood.
In a, in a TND, mandatory TND, I, I don't have a problem with it.
Right. But there is no longer mandatory TND.
It's optional.
Right. So then the question is, if somebody comes in with a 20 acre parcel. Is it optional? It's optional to be a TND. Is it optional to be a, to have the minimum density? Procedurally, I just want to be, please feel free to discuss anything you want to. The council did not ask the specific question of the commission. But please feel free to.
Not on that.
On minimum density.
So what we're saying, did Michael? The, sorry, sorry. The, the council only. It did not raise any questions or concerns regarding the minimum density.
I, I didn't say that they didn't raise any questions or concerns. They just.
No, they said, uh.
What they asked us to talk about.
To build on all 10 acres in their, in their example. You know, I, I don't like the coercive, but why don't we make it just three acres? Uh, three units per acre on all of this and not divided into two. Um, to get a little less onerous.
I don't, I mean, this just isn't what we're talking about. Like it's not, it's not on the agenda. It's not what we've been asked to talk about. This is already been, we've already voted on this and it went to the city council.
I know we voted on it and I know we. Were half asleep when we did so.
No, we talked about this multiple times and it wasn't that late.
That language was seen by the commission for the ver, very first time at the end of the July 31st meeting.
But we did discuss it then though. We did discuss and vote on it.
It's also language that's in all the current, it's in the, it's not new language.
Yeah, which was what we approved on the 31st of Jan, of July.
No, no, we approved it in 2022, like this, or even.
No, no, I'm, I'm talking about the, the, go back to the minimum density there, Paul.
Yeah, the minimum density is in our current LDRs. And we talked about it conceptually many, many times since we started this process.
I, I don't want to make a decision on this tonight and, uh.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying. We already made the decision.
It's been made. It's in the council's hands, not our hands.
Well.
In the council's.
You might not.
But don't you want to decide if we like these options?
That's what I think we should be doing.
Yeah. What I'm saying is that's not on our agenda.
Yeah.
This is the options.
Okay.
So if, Michael, if you still have a problem with that, that's fine, but I think you have to raise it with the council, not with us.
Yeah, I know that the LDRs are with them now.
Yes.
So the, the last puzzle piece, um, that I think we talked, touched on very briefly last week, but I just want to make sure is clear here is. We, um, the master plan carve out. As drafted right now, says that if you've got four acres of land, you can carve out up to two. We realize that there's a gap in there, which is that if you own three acres of land. You must master plan that three acres. You don't get a carve out. We thought that does not seem like a very equitable way to go about it. So there's a small tweak in here that says that. A lot of two acres or more can carve up to, can carve out up to two acres as long as two remain. And that mirrors your current language, um, that you have in the, um, carve out of the conservation PUD. So that just closes a unintentional gap where somebody owned three acres, they're stuck master planning and they don't get a carve out. So now they get the carve out.
Well, how does that relate? Just the, the math doesn't work for me. So if you have. You can.
So if you had three acres, you could carve out one acre. And then have two left.
Oh, I see.
If you had. Two and a half acres, you could carve out half an acre. It still lets you carve something out.
Okay.
Rather than, you know, sticking with doing a master plan.
Confusing as it reads, because.
Two acres as long as there's two other acres, but if you only have three acres, that doesn't work.
I'm okay with that. Yeah, that's new language.
Yep.
Okay, um, do we, is this something that we need to do a motion on? Cause it's an actual.
That's up to you. The, the request was that you present these options, Jessica. So you, you can take whatever form of. Support in presenting those. That are, that is, that you feel is helpful to you.
I, I think if we had a motion to support, that would probably be.
That's probably the most helpful and I'm not just making it up.
Are we just talking about the, uh, the. Changes to two acre carver? Oh, all this, all this.
Yeah.
Rewrite of options one, two, and three for unreserved land or.
And then also the two acre carve out. So those are two.
And reserved for future use.
Or reserved for future use.
Gotcha.
So we need to make a motion to. Approve.
Prove that language.
That I present this, these options.
Yeah, you present this language as a consensus of, from the planning commission.
As options to the city council.
Right.
Are we making a motion?
We are making a motion. Yes.
Yeah, I think Duncan's making a motion.
I think we, I just tried.
Okay, Duncan made a motion and Helen, you seconded.
I will second it. Yeah.
Can I make a friendly, a request for a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Um, we are, I feel. We are, I feel very good about this language and also it was Kelsey's first day back, so, um, if we have very minor little adjustments to make it read better between now and the Pat and Jessica's presentation and Jessica's on board with that, is that okay to your amendment? It's not in meaning just making sure that it reads cleanly.
Yes.
Is it on October the sixteenth?
September sixteenth.
I mean
Yeah.
And then
Look at this and then they have a public hearing on the thirtieth.
So they have a, they have a hearing on the sixteenth.
Yes.
If they choose to make any changes.
Like adopt these, yeah.
Like accept these, then they would have to warn a new public hearing on those changes.
Yeah.
And depending on when they do that, if they do it on the sixteenth, the hearing would be on October twenty first.
October twenty first, oh, okay.
And then if they defer action, it'll be later, but there has to be warned in the newspaper at least fifteen days in advance, et cetera, so. So there would still be another bite at the apple if they make any changes.
Will you send us this new?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna wait till the motion is
Yeah, we need to, we need to
This is a motion?
Any discussion on the motion?
This card, so we are recommending that the city council make these changes, is that we're doing a motion on here?
We're recommending that these are the options that Jessica is gonna present to them.
Okay.
This is what they asked, they asked for some options and we are recommending that these are the options that we think they should look at.
Okay, okay.
That makes sense?
Yes, a- a- aren't we just presenting one option? Oh, sorry, when you say options, you mean like this list of options?
Options one, two and three.
Oh, okay, I, okay, like I said, there's one set of language for options one, two and three. Okay, gotcha, I, sorry, I was thinking like a, a, what, a list of different types of language that we would be giving them, not, okay, okay, thank, okay, thank you.
Um, okay, is everyone clear then? Any discussion? Um, anything from the public? Okay.
Andrew, you awake?
Um, he's, he's, he's reacting, um, okay, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May.
Okay, we
So, um, just to be clear, under the new open meeting law, if anybody is remote and it's not unanimous, it has to be a roll call vote.
Okay, um.
So you have to call on each person to vote, to state their na- who, say it verbally individually.
Okay, um, Paul Engels?
Um, yes, yay.
Was, is that okay, does he need to say?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Um, Con Lawrence?
Uh, yes.
Michael Metag?
No.
Helen, really?
Yes.
Duncan McDonald?
Yes.
And I'm Jessica Luisos, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and so it does pass, but not unanimous.
Right.
Um, is there any other business?
No.
Okay, we did minutes already. So I think we are adjourned. Very good, thank you, I didn't keep us to our time, but thank you, Colin. Oh, you're welcome.
Of course.
Coming your way.
I'll send in something different just to make your life
Bye, everyone.